Regular session meeting for December 7th. We will need the flag. Stand. Do the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. If you would all please remain standing for a moment of silence for all the men and women past and present, who helped protect us and our great country as well as the healthcare workers who will continue to stand between us and the pandemic. Thank you very much. Please be seated. If you like. I always forget people at home, you can stand, you can do whatever you want. You don't have to sit. Okay. Need a motion to get the warrant signs?
So moved.
Second.
And to authorize Mr. McGinnis to use the stamp.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, David?
Yes.
Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself. Okay. First appointment. Was it six thirty? It's now six forty-three. Shaw's change of beneficial interest. Nick, I guess that's you.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, fine.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And if I can get some of those cookies too, I would appreciate it.
Isle four.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This should be fairly quick. Members of the board, attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Quintian Miller in Boston. Here with me today, I see him on the participant list is Paul Siciliano, who is our proposed new manager of record as well. So he's here with me tonight. So we're here before you tonight really for some just administrative housekeeping type updates on behalf of the licensee, which is Shaw's supermarkets at 15 State Road. There's three matters under this application for amendment before you tonight. First is a change of officers and directors here locally in Massachusetts for Shaw's supermarkets. Basically, the licensee has made some changes to their officers and directors here in Massachusetts. So as we have to do, we are looking to update those individuals. So they are current with what is on file with the state. The second amendment is for a change of ownership interest for the licensee's parent company, which is Albertson's Companies, Inc. They still remain the ultimate interest holder in the liquor license and in Shaw's, but their ownership has changed in that they've recently gone public earlier this year. And so they now trade on the New York Stock Exchange. And as a result, we need to also update those filings with the town as well as with the state. So those are two kind of corporate changes. And then the third matter before the board tonight is for a change of manager of record from Michael Rents to Paul Siciliano. And again, Mr. Siciliano is here. I see him at least showing up on the attendee list, but he's a longtime Shaw's employee. He's been there for over 39 years in various roles with the company. He's the store director now. He has not previously been a manager of record on a liquor license before, but as I just stated, he has almost 40 years of extensive experience in the supermarket industry. As required by statute, he is a citizen of the United States. He's a resident of Massachusetts. He is over 21 years of age, so he does qualify to be a manager of record on a liquor license. He also has served safe certified, which we have submitted to the town. His certificate showing that he's gone through the training. So he is a qualified individual and is up for the task. Other than that, there are no other operational changes to the store itself. Again, this is really just an updated housekeeping administrative type of an issue. There are no changes to the store layout, no changes to the hours of operation, anything of that nature. So happy to answer any questions you may have for either myself or for Mr. Siciliano.
And no felonies for the new manager?
No, sir.
Any questions from the board? Stanley?
I just want to make sure that the new manager understands that initially ongoing, we had a few issues of movement of your liquor, which was not within the, within the contract with us, with the town. So just to make sure that he understands the, the responsibility of, you know, of Shaw's.
Understood.
Since that point, it was, it's been fine. And I'm sure it was a misunderstanding, but you know, always best to go, especially with a new manager would be helpful and it would not be a good idea for us not to bring it up.
Understood. We'll, we'll make sure that Mr. Siciliano knows that. And I believe this is a fairly new license. Only a few years. I did the first hearing when we got approved for it. So I, I would hopefully attribute that to growing pains. Yeah, so understood, but I'll make sure that, that I pass that along to the folks at Shaw's.
Thank you very much.
Okay, board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second? Yeah, all right. We'll let John make the motion and Sean second. Roll call vote, Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
We lost David. I will say yes anyway. I don't know, David, you there?
He disconnected earlier. I think he'll get back on. Send him a text, see.
Okay. We have, we have four, four number of votes anyway, so.
Yeah.
Fair. I'm sure David would say yes too, but I don't want to put words in his mouth. Just worried about not getting any cookies either.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. Stay safe, everybody.
Happy holidays.
Okay, new business. Item A, we've eliminated. Item B is a marijuana RFQ advertisement to get us.
Yes, I just wanted to, I was at a previous meeting with the board and with Cody Hadad to talk about the updated RFQ for marijuana, which include, included retail and manufacturing in cultivation. We issued that RFQ last week publicly. It's posted on the town's website. Anybody interested can go to the town's website under bids and it, they can download a copy and register their name and download a copy. So the point of registering is if there's any changes or questions, we can share those with all of the interested parties. The RFQs are due January 13th. We gave a little extra time due to the holidays. We, we hope to review them with our internal team, you know, as soon as they come in. And then, you know, see if they are viable candidates in town and then bring them before the select board, either one or multiple, depending on their qualifications and our number of licenses for approval.
Okay. Any questions from anyone? Cody, nice to see you.
Thanks. Nice to see you as well.
And there's David. We can see him again.
Sorry, couple of computer problems tonight. My apologies.
That's okay.
We have a contact list of interested parties that have contacted us over, you know, the past couple of years. So we maintain that and we send the RFQ notification out to all of them. And we've been contacted by other agents, other potential applicants as well. So we've contacted them, but if we, we like to make it public through these meetings so that interested parties can, can get the word out.
It's nice to know there is some interest.
Yes.
Mr. Herron?
I was just wondering if any growth facilities have contacted you?
Yes. We, we've had an interested party contact us that's interested in cultivation and manufacturing.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. That was just informational, so don't worry about anything.
Correct.
We can move on. Select board meeting schedule approval?
Yes, so here's the date through May. We've checked, no holidays, but I didn't know if they all worked for the individual board members.
At first glance, they look fine to me, but who knows as things go along. Of course, we could always change something, so. Yeah. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the meeting schedule and a second. Roll call, Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Sean?
Yes.
And me, yes.
Frank, I can't remember. Do you like it sent as a Word file or Excel file? I couldn't remember.
Anything that I can edit. The only thing I can't edit is PDF, so.
All right, I'll, I'll send it to the board as a Word file, so.
That's fine. Thank you. Every time I have to do, I have to jump through hoops if it's in a PDF format, so.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I just add it to my calendar program, so.
Yeah.
I do the same thing.
What I can do is try to get the Zoom links ahead of time maybe and include those underneath the dates. Would that be helpful? Or do you want to just wait?
No, they get lost.
All right.
With the number of emails you get, it has a tendency to get lost.
We have to look way too far, way too far back. We'd have to shuffle.
We'll have a meeting by then.
Should be current, really. Makes sense.
That's, that's true. We might be a meeting in person.
Well, hope so.
It'd be nice.
Schedule doesn't go through years.
Well, we hope that's not the case.
Yeah. Okay. Item D, town contract, town administrator contract approval. What would the board like to do?
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a, and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, you know, several years ago, Mr. Kressman gave the select board a graph. This graph showed the revenues and expenses. The revenue line was basically flat, but the, the expense line was moving fast and about to intersect the revenue line. Frank Gracie, as chairman of the finance committee, warned finance committee members that bad times were coming. COVID-19 is not the cause of our current financial problems, only an accelerant. Governor Charlie Baker is going to use the state's rainy day funds to help balance the budget. The town of Dartmouth has been warned that the state's reimbursement will be less, possibly five to 20% less. I believe it will be closer to 20%. Revenue for the town of Dartmouth are down. Food tax, excise tax, and permit income, all down, and businesses are closing. Mr. McGinnis came before the select board for his contract renewal. He said he wanted $185,000, a $25,000 raise for the first year of his contract. The select board did not negotiate. They did not counter offer. Mr. Kressman was making around $150,000 after over 20 years as a town administrator. Mr. McGinnis has only been a town administrator for three years. The select board, through Mr. McGinnis, has been asking our unions to accept raises in the range of 2%. All my life, I have been told you lead by example. During good times, the captain and the team get raises, and maybe the captain gets more than the team. But in bad times, the captain gets the same raise as the team. When I make a financial decision on behalf of the town, I question whether the town can afford it and whether the town wants to pay for it. To all union members in the town of Dartmouth, I did not insult you. I did not vote for this contract.
Thank you for remembering my history with my calculations because I always thought no one was paying attention.
I heard you loud and clear, Frank.
You were, you were absolutely right. David?
This is a substantial increase. And we also did a thorough review of the marketplace. A marketplace that had some examples that were quite comparative to the town and others that were even larger or smaller. We found that small towns are looking for competent people who want to pay even more than what Mr. McGinnis requested. Even more for a town that's a third of the size. Now is the time to have strong leadership, more than ever. Mr. McGinnis has been here over an amazing time for our town, not only in the beginning of hiring all these new people, but also after the largest crisis and still not solved crisis in the history of our town. And where are we now? He even gave us a graph recently about, in our recent mail, about how we save money, cut back help and, and froze, froze, froze hirings, et cetera, et cetera. Now is the time to have major leadership, where you have foresight, where you have control, where you have, where you have people who work together in a way that only comes from the best leadership at the top. I for one, if we went out shopping again, I am quite confident myself that we find someone that would cost us probably in the similar range, but without the proven track record that he's had over these last, yes, two years, but the man's been in this business for 25 years. I was skeptical in the beginning because he never was a number one. He's now been in charge of a $95 million enterprise through crisis after crisis after crisis. And I think that the, the leadership aspect has gotten stronger and stronger over time. I don't want to spend this kind of money, but I do not want to lose this fellow. I think that's a number that was, was competent, was certainly deserved based on the marketplace and where we'd have to go after this. Not prepared to bring someone in new start cold turkey at a time we don't need it. On the other hand, I'm very prepared to be very aggressive with Mr. McGinnis about continued cost controls, about continued services growth online. We're facing the master plan, the charter commission, the harbor plan. We want more economic growth and we want to save money and we have UMass Dartmouth. And we still have to deal with managing COVID. It's not over and it's hardly over. Now's the time to have the best leadership we can find. And I'm, I voted for it and I'm staying with it, of course, and I'm glad to have him aboard. Thank you.
What else? Sean?
I'd just like to echo a little bit what David had said. In reviewing the communities that we looked at, there are much communities that were much smaller than us that were paying their town administrator, town manager, over $200,000. Looking at the per capita cost of each town administrator that was given to us versus the town using the structure of the salary and the population, Mr. McGinnis's salary is still the lowest of all of them. using the structure of the salary and the population, Mr. McGinnis's salary is still the lowest of all of them. You're dealing in a, in a position such as his where you're dealing with a lot of situations that have come about. We asked Mr. McGinnis to give us an opportunity to give us a history of cost savings. And the cost savings that Mr. McGinnis has overseen, implemented, and offered far more has been saving over a period of time than what the initial cost of the bump in the salary range. Um, what Mr. Herron doesn't tell you is that uh, the second and third year of the contract is just strictly, um, a percentage increase, uh, um, and not a, the, the huge amount of money that the first one is. This, to me, this is not a huge amount of money to have leadership at this time. Um, you're dealing with many things and really what this also does. This also places the onus on Mr. McGinnis to continue the work, to continue what he has strived to do, to continue the cost savings, to continue the leadership, um, that is needed. Right at this point in time, you have a new conservation commission inspector or director of conservation. You're going to have a new DPW uh, director. You're going to have a new building commissioner. And I'm sure there's going to be others. And and I think there has to be a constant, especially in the hierarchy of this town. This town is, is fortunate to have long-term serving individuals in management roles and in the employee roles. And we're reaching a point now where a lot of those long-term are meeting retirements, re- retirements, and we've seen it. And it's hard to replace these individuals. To, to have to say that this is, that Mr. Kressman's salary when he came aboard was X. Okay, that, that's fair enough, but that's that's past history. A loaf of bread was twenty-nine cents back in nineteen twenty and now it's two bucks, three bucks. Uh, you know, so you can't compare back then to now. You can't compare uh, several years ago, or actually a long time ago, you know, the, the biggest the biggest fallacy of any job is is just because you don't have the experience doesn't mean you can't do the job. Uh, to throw out that somebody's experience is twenty-five years. Makes an individual coming into the job that has, that has, is new to the job, doesn't give him the right to to earn that job. Mr. McGinnis has earned this job. He's earned the right for a second year contract, for a second contract. Um, and I for one have absolutely no qualm in, um, in voting for it. And, uh, but I also have no qualm in making sure that Mr. McGinnis's feet is held to the fire to do the things that he's supposed to do. He knows that. Um, he knows, he knows the makeup of this board. He knows we're five individuals. And and he pretty much knows exactly what each and one of us wants, you know, brings to the table. So, and that in itself, guys, is no big task. To be honest with you, because there are times I get frustrated with all of us and get frustrated with myself sometimes. You know, so when you're having one person, it's like herding a bunch of cats. Okay, and it's difficult. Um, but I think, um, I think we got the right man for the right job at the right time.
David.
Very well put, Sean. And David, uh, I'm not going to bore the listeners with, you know, repetitive comments about Mr. McGinnis. But Mr. McGinnis, you truly are the number one man now. Uh, and I too had apprehensions when we first interviewed you. You've proven yourself in many, many ways. You, but the biggest thing is you've proven yourself as, as a leader, a respected leader, more importantly, respected by the people that work for him, the people that work with him, and that the select board, I believe unanimously support you. Maybe not your raise, but support you as an individual and what you've done. And, um, I, I can't tell you how, how thrilled I am personally and professionally to have you back. I wouldn't want to have to go through in this time, uh, another time of a rehire for a, uh, to save a few thousand dollars and then end up with someone that's, uh, not going to make it like you have done for us. You're a proven leader and we're, I'm, I'm thrilled to have you back. Thrilled.
Okay, I I agree with much of what, of what has been said. However, what's implied by the three of you is that at any cost is after what you say. That's not the way I I deal with my money. That's not the way I deal with the town's money. I agree he deserves another contract. It's entirely the amount that I'm, that I'm against. Uh, and I also believe that, uh, David said that, you know, uh, you always look for the best person you can find. I don't look for the best person I can find. I look for the best person I can find at the cost I can afford. And that's the difference. So, do we have a, uh?
Just before you go, Frank, just to want to make, I just want to make a clarification. I never said anything at, at cost. Okay, I, and that's not you're putting, you're putting, yeah, you're putting words into my mouth. It's, it's not there. It's not at any cost. I think the cost of the contract that we negotiated is reasonable for what at this point in time. And it's not at any cost. If it's any cost, then we'd be talking way, way, way over, way over the amount, and that's not, no.
I, I'll buy that. We know we're in financial trouble. We also know we're going to be laying off employees. So to me, that means it doesn't matter what he wants. He's going to get it at any cost. That, that's what's implied.
And that's, that's not the implication.
That's not true at all.
No, it's ridiculous. David?
Uh, I, I, there's been a flurry of, uh, new, uh, advertising and announcements around towns all around us for administrators. And, uh, reading through some of the requirements and, uh, the, the, what they're going to have to pay for these towns that are minute in size to ours. It's, to me, is a great indication of what the marketplace is. People are demanding and want leadership and they're paying for it. It's like used cars today. They're so overpriced, it's ridiculous because they're worth it and that's the marketplace because everybody wants one. Everybody was looking for a town administrator like ours. And, and I'm, the idea is to seal the deal and be done and then know that we can now move forward because we have a leader here for the next three years. The definition of compromise, my dad told me one long time ago, is that nobody's happy. And I think we've reached that level.
Yeah. I, I, we have different values. My values are that nobody deserves a twenty-five thousand dollar raise in one year. You spread it out. So. Did we have a mo, did we make a motion in a second? I believe we did. Roll call vote Stanley.
Yes.
John.
Yes. Did you say John or Sean?
I said John.
John, no.
Yeah, that's because we aligned up on my screen. So, now, Sean. Sean, you're yes.
Me? Yes.
Yes. Uh, David?
Yes.
And I vote no for all the reasons that John mentioned before. So it passes three to two.
And I don't know if you want to take a vote to have the contract stamped because it's not.
If, if it's, if it's.
Make a motion, yeah, make a motion that we stamp the contract, um, that we allow the stamp to be used for as our signatures on the contract.
Second.
Okay, and just for, just for your knowledge, I don't want my name on this contract. So figure out a way to take my name off the stamp. I don't want to be associated with it. Okay, roll, roll call for Stanley.
Yes.
John.
Uh, I, I don't understand what you mean by that, Frank. Could you clarify that?
I don't want to sign the contract. I don't want somebody to pick that up a year from now and say, oh, look, everybody agreed. Because I don't.
Cross his name off.
That's right. John, you feel the same way? Is that what you?
I was saying, no, yes, same with you, Frank.
Okay.
All right. So then forget the motion. I make a motion that we have the stamped contract with the signs named of those individuals who approved the contract and those individuals who voted no against the contract can have their name just crossed out. It could be on the contract but crossed out.
Well, you could also stop it from printing by putting a piece of tape.
Now, have it crossed out. That's my motion.
Second. Well, wait a minute, um, time, um, do we, the three of us have a problem about showing up at town hall and signing it? Personally signing it. I don't have a problem doing that.
I don't have a problem doing.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'd like you to withdraw that, Sean, if you don't mind. And I'd like us to vote that we go to town hall with this week and personally sign the contract. And John, John, you won't have to. And, and, and Frank, you won't have to.
Okay.
Is that, is that, is that all good with you?
That's fine.
The five of us, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Let's, let's make that official vote. Uh, Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Uh, yes.
Sean?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes.
Thank you.
Good suggestion. Okay, down the licensing rules. All licenses are subject to the police chief, fire chief, and director of inspectional services approval. I will go through the list. First, first category is restaurant, all alcoholic, common vidler's license. AMC theaters, Apple, New England, phase two, Gumbos, ninety-nine Restaurant and Club. As an aside, it's nice to see some of the ones that were missing last night have come through. So.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, uh, roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes. Restaurant, all alcoholic, common vidler license, entertainment with alcohol, Brazilian Grill, Busted Sports Bar, and Rachel's Lake Cider.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself. Restaurant, wine and malt beverage, common vidler. Uh, Jimmy's Pizza at Bacon and Garden.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And me, yes. All alcoholic restaurant, common vidler, amusement devices, jukebox, pool table, entertainment with alcohol, Buffalo Wild Wings, Thirsty Whale, and the King's Inn.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Club, all alcoholic, common vidler, entertainment with alcohol. Alan, Allen Dale Country Club, common, uh, Country Club of New Bedford.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, uh, roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Club, all alcoholic, amusement devices, pool table, jukebox, entertainment with alcohol, VFW Memorial Post.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Package goods store, all alcoholic, Acme Liquors and CV variety.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Package good store, wine and malt beverages, BJ's, CNN variety, Smith Mills Mobile.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Sean?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And this is a list of those who have yet not renewed their liquor licenses. Azuma, Asian Bistro, Little Moss, Civili, Chuck E. Cheese, and UMass Dartmouth Smooth Serve, Inc. I suspect they'll be popping up at some point, but not, not as of yet. So. Yeah, Mr. McGinnis. We're done, we're done reminding people, right?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to make that clear while we're on the air. So.
Haven't, haven't we made phone calls to them? And Christine in the office and, and, and Melanie? Phone calls after phone calls to give them people an opportunity, even if they didn't have their check ready, that just to make sure they come and sign the papers.
Multiple times. We also, with our new online licensing system, were able to send out emails to them and with the system, we're able to see if they've opened them and read them and we can see.
So there's no, no, no excuses.
No, we've really made, uh, you know, uh, multiple efforts in, in a variety of formats.
Thank you.
What is the status? Gradded Chuck E. Cheese is hibernating now.
What, what is their status of operating in this, their, their, their place of business without having the license?
Well, these are for next year, so they would start January first.
Well, I mean, if they haven't renewed in January, they're.
They can't serve alcohol, correct?
They cannot. Okay. I thought so. Thank you.
Sean?
On the other license renewals that'll be coming up, um, are we going to get, um, any type of inspection reports on some of the class two, class three licenses?
Uh, yes, that's part of the licensing process. Correct.
Okay, because I'm more specific, um, in, in retrospect for one particular class two license.
They all, but, oh, okay, that's good, but they all do get inspected. So we'll have all that information.
Okay.
Okay, we're all set to move on? Old business. Mr. McGinnis.
Okay, uh, Bliss Corner, uh, no new update there. Uh, COVID nineteen update, uh, the, uh, the governor has rolled back the town of Dartmouth's phase three from step two to step one. Uh, for all the communities that are in the red for three consecutive weeks, they, uh, they get, uh, they go back one step on phase three. It's mostly pertains to businesses. They've all been, uh, you know, they should be notified by the, the state and the governor's office. Uh, I included that in the packet, um, for you tonight to see what the difference were in the, the steps. Uh, so, you know, we continue to monitor the governor's office and, uh, you know, it's not looking promising with, uh, cases peaking. I think he alluded to it today a little bit in a press conference that, uh, there could be more changes to come. But so we wait and see and uh, we react appropriately when that happens. Uh, in, in those lines, uh, in meetings with department heads today, uh, I talked about the departments developing teaming plans. Uh, town hall is open to the public and staff are in town offices are open. Uh, but you know, with, um, having to close a few weeks ago on short notice, we want to, uh, make sure that, you know, staff, uh, and the public are safe when they're in town hall and, or any town office for business. So we're developing teaming plans uh, to keep staff safe. So, uh, and if there is any sort of outbreak, we wouldn't be shut down completely. We could have staff. One team could be home, the other team could be in place. So they're developing those this week and we'd be prepared to implement those. We also already, as you know, have a remote operations plan, which we've implemented multiple times, which works well, but we want to try to be open for the public as much as possible while maintaining a safe environment. Uh, the fishing pier, uh, attorney Cruz will have an update for you, uh, at the next meeting. He's been in touch with the state. He was unavailable tonight, but he will be here on the twenty-first to give a, a detailed update on where those are, that grant applications at.
David?
Could you, Sean, could you just clarify, uh, on Bliss Corner as to what what the state has said and what they're doing, what we're waiting for, just so people can maybe get much, I know we don't have a lot of information, whatever you can, it's bound upon.
Your DEP is still doing their investigation. Um, they've partnered with the EPA to do soil sampling. Currently, they're sampling, uh, private sites. They've contacted the property owners, uh, about accessing the site, uh, the property owners that have been um, amenable to that. They've had, they just signed a, a small, uh, dis- agreement allowing DEP to go on the site and do testing and DEP has been in that process. Um, and we've talked to them, you know, a few months ago, I'd asked them, you know, when they could come in before the board, you know, with COVID, things are slowed down, but they, they said they had hoped to be done with the individual testing soon. Uh, I didn't know what soon meant. They weren't, they wouldn't clarify, but that was a few months ago, but we, I continue to check in with them regularly.
It, it, so, uh, they're, they're still testing, but they've been testing, uh, say they've been testing now for months.
Hmm.
Um, are they actually performing tests that you know of, or we don't really know what they're doing?
Yes, they are still performing tests.
I mean, one a week, one a month? Do we have any idea?
I, I have no idea.
I mean, uh, if I'm living out there now, I, I mean, is there more we can, I know that it's a state project, but even if they can't meet with us, can we kind, I think people deserve to know as much as we can find out. Is that possible?
Yeah, DEP has a website dedicated to this project, uh, and any information that they have that's new, they post on that project. Uh, they post on that website.
Oh. Can, can we, can we glean some of that in the next meeting and make? Can can we, can we glean some of that in the next meeting and make a verbal, uh, and it's just a and not, an analysis of what they're saying, what to expect to, to make it a little bit easier for people to know what's, if anybody else objects to that, fine, but I think it's been a long time since we've really addressed any specifics and I understand that it's not in our purview, but is there any way we can let people know, you know, translate what they're saying on these website into what it might mean for the town?
I I think that's a great idea, uh, as things become more and more silent, people
Yep.
think we've forgotten about it and that's not.
Yep, they don't deserve that. We, and I well, I made my point. We have not much to do, but our hands are tied, but people deserve more than what we're giving them. Certainly, the state seems to be dragging their feet, but that's easy for us to say from here.
Right, but we can at least be the vehicle to provide information, so that that's.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll do.
Okay. Minutes, November 9th, 2020.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second, roll call, Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself. Uh, last item, uh, in information, old police station, Mr. McGinnis.
Uh, yeah, yeah, that's just in the packet, so our, uh, Chief Lebec had contacted me about using the old police station, uh, for training. Uh, that request, I just asked him to send along, I included it in your packet, so they do, uh, police training in the building.
I I know they used to use Gidley School, but I thought this, I thought this building had asbestos and other hazards in the area.
Yeah.
So why is it okay for them to go in and use it?
Right. I don't think it's a good idea. I don't at all.
I don't think it's a good.
Jeopardize jeopardize our police force.
Right.
I understand, you know, it's it's tempting, but my God, I I wouldn't go in there.
Okay, I will let him know.
Yeah, John?
Yeah.
I think the amount of asbestos in there is covered already, so I think we should have a Mr. Police Chief Lebec give us an answer for it before we say no to him. I think it's a a vital instrument of training.
I I I think it's important what they do, but the problem is we couldn't sell the building because of the condition it's in, so why do we allow somebody to use it?
Yeah, I'd be frightened to death. If something came up, we'd be looking at a lawsuit.
It wasn't so, it wasn't so much the asbestos in the building, it was the mold in the building. And that, I don't think the mold has been mitigated. So, and that, and that is, and that was the reason why the building was abandoned. Not because of the asbestos. Because just about every old building in town has asbestos. You know, tiles and whatnot, you know, whatever, wrapped heating pipes and stuff like that, you know, unless and let me just, let me just qualify that, you know, asbestos is only bad if it's, uh, uncovered or, um, uh, compromised. If it's still wrapped, it's not dangerous, so. But there, that was the main reason why the building, I understand the use of the building and there would be great for training, um, especially with flash grenades. Um, and that's what Gidley School was. But the reason why the abandoned, the building was abandoned was because of the mold situation and because of the, uh, um, the ventilation problems, um, that got an officer sick. Remember that.
So based on the, based on the comments, I think we should at least push back and express those concerns to Chief Lebec and see what his answer is, as John suggested.
Great, I think so. That's fine.
Okay. Frank, why don't you go in there and volunteer, check the place out and stop throwing some of those grenades around?
I I actually got a two a dog. When, when, when we were in transition to what we were going to do with it. And have to wear masks and gloves and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
Just not a, not a good place to be.
Yeah, the the last thing I want to do is send employees into any employee or any person a building, uh, into a sick building, you know?
Right. Right.
So we're going to send a letter to the chief to explain why, how we feel, let him come back to us with a reply. Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, they can bring some dogs in there and see if the dogs survive.
No, we wouldn't want to do that either.
About canaries.
Well, it's canaries are different, that's gas.
Yeah.
I got a couple of cats I could throw in there, see if they come out.
Yeah, but your wife will kill you.
Good point. Okay, anything else by anyone?
Um, just to just get a, um, we're going to have an update shortly on the legal um, legal situations going on in town.
Yeah, so, um, I had that on for tonight, but we had, uh, the other issue that we were talking about in executive session, so too much time, so the next meeting, it'll be on.
Okay.
One meeting after, the end meeting after that, well, so a problem property is at one meeting and then a litigation update at the other.
Yeah, because having a problem property and then, uh, li- uh, the legal situation all at one executive session, we'd, it'd be a two hour, three hour executive session on its own. Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion to adjourn in a second. Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good night, everyone. We're done.